You good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're good.
I'm calling to order.
Hold on. Okay, now.
Okay. Good evening, I'm calling the South Borough Zoning Board of Appeals to order for this evening, December 11th, 2024. Tonight, we are, this is not a hearing, we're meeting to discuss decision and conditions regarding 120 Turnpike, the 40B application. So, it is, my understanding, our duty tonight is to go through what we have for conditions and findings. I will say that Attorney Tallman and Ms. Davis have done clearly a lot of work to prepare the board with pulling in information from the different sources that we had, peer reviewers, other town boards. We do have, Jamie is remote, Doug is possibly remote, but he might not be here. Mike Robbins should be here within a few minutes. So, we could either recess for three minutes, or just get started. I just, I was just gonna, my thought was to use what you drafted as sort of the template to go through. I think, I know Doris, you had your own conditions that you put in there. I feel like a lot of the things that are raised from different sources are actually captured in here.
Yeah, so when I read the packet earlier, and then some of the drafts, a lot that I talked about.
Oh, Doris microphone?
Sure.
How's that?
That's better.
Okay, great. So, I agree with you David, I looked at these couple of packets of the week, so I gave this to Laura a few weeks back after the last hearing. And I think a lot of it's covered, but I have a few more comments, just one or two things did not seem immediately to be covered, either by changing or denying one of the waivers or changing one of the waivers. So, this list looks a little longer than it needs to be, but I think most of this captures it, I agree.
Yeah, I would, it's very thorough, and I might need, excuse me, I might need Jay to take me through a couple of the legal terms here, but I, to me, it looks like it's very thorough, and the concerns that have been raised are in here.
Right, but in no way was I trying to draft legalese.
Oh, no. Yeah.
I just was, from the various hearings and the resources over the different hearings the public brought forth, that they could be included as conditions.
Okay.
We're doing the, at some point during this deliberation, whether we do it tonight or do it another night, we're gonna take care of that special permit modification, too.
Yeah.
It's a much smaller component, because it's largely deferential to what we're doing.
Okay. Yeah, that was actually what I was, what I reviewed prior to the meeting, that I looked at, and I said, I don't, I'm not sure, I was wrapping my head around what you put in there for findings, but that's not what we're talking about here, that's a special permit, correct? It was a special permit on 120, the decision that I think.
Right, so there's a request for a modification of the 2005.
Yeah.
Mostly just because they're taking some land away and complicating the drives on the site, so.
Right.
It's really kind of what it's about, so I kept it, Laura drafted it, and I just added a couple of findings, made a couple comments on the conditions, and then said, hey, we're gonna incorporate all of the applicable conditions that are over in that other.
Yeah.
Decision, too.
Okay.
But we don't have to, that we can deal with, I think, after we.
Yeah, so it makes sense to go through what we have here. Okay, all right. So, again, if we use this as, sorry, the draft, that is, decision on application for comprehensive permit application. Mass General Licensee 40B. Hey, Mike. Applicant FD 120 Turnpike LLC, the applicant. So, the procedural history, jurisdictional findings, I don't, to me, I don't, we're not going through these with the findings.
No, I mean, we don't, we don't have to.
I reviewed them.
Yeah, I think what's helpful is that if we take it through that first section, it's kind of in general, what I like to do, and we'd like to, there are jurisdictional prerequisites.
Okay.
For doing a 40B site control, that they have a subsidizing agency, that they control the site, so this is where we kind of make those findings.
Okay.
And we lay out also, kind of, the history of it, which is extensive, which Laura did a great job with. And then I like to add, like, who are the players here, you know, who was on their side, who was on our side, who helped, in terms of consultants, lawyers, whatever. I do like to mention in this section that if there was active participation by town officials, the public, like to put that in there, just, we kind of tell that procedural, but you're right, there's nothing surprising here, unless this follows more or less a template that I kind of utilize.
Okay.
On all my comprehensive permits, it's just setting the table, telling the story, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, excuse me, I viewed it the same way, that it's basically factual, when was the application applied for, the, where's the property, who's the applicant, you're right, it talks about site control.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to those that don't have it in front of them.
So, there, on, in paragraph six, you've just left open for the decision, that is pending, whatever, if we.
Yeah, whenever.
Include tonight, or we have to continue to a different date.
Right, it could be, we could add tonight's night, and then if we don't finish.
Yep.
A second night of deliberation, depending on how far we get, but Laura and I tried to leave in highlighting, highlighted form, things that are still not quite finalized, and obviously, we have some other comments, and, you know, we'll go through everything in terms of the, I'm really most interested, I'll go through, like, why, like, on project and property description, I try and capture some of the stuff that, but really, what we're here to talk about is, is the findings first, and then the conditions, because the findings are setting up some of the more particular conditions that we have. Seventy-five percent of all the conditions are boilerplate stuff, that I've learned over the years to put in these permits. But the twenty-five percent of it is really dependent upon some of the unique findings here, we had a number of issues here, subdivision issues, the open space issues, some wetlands issues, and a few other unique things here that exist, so the findings section is really pretty important for us to make sure we get right.
Okay.
It's not fatal if we don't get something, because findings are kind of inherent in conditions, but I think it's helpful for, if anyone has to review this in the future, what, how we reached our conclusions.
Okay, all right.
So.
I just have a short question, does the zoning board of appeals still come through issuing a comprehensive permit for a non-buildable?
You got it.
I have a quick question, this is Paul Carter, Sixth Hillside Avenue. Quick question, does the zoning board of appeals members feel comfortable issuing a comprehensive permit for a non-buildable lot with no frontage?
Okay, thank you. I, I think, I do think we're gonna go through and address those type of concerns in here, we have findings and conditions, so.
It's on the screen.
Oh, it's on the screen, thank you.
It's under the waiver section.
Get rid of this.
Pretty sure it's under waiver, Laura, do you want to bring that section up? In the waivers. It's definitely a draft, just a matter of finding it.
So, just in the name of.
Good evening.
Getting somewhere. Again, through paragraph 10, I would say, there's nothing.
Paragraph 10 of which section?
I'm sorry, of the first section, I think we're, I'm just looking at what's in here. In my own opinion, I don't think there's anything worth having a discussion about, it's really sort of, again, stating the facts of.
Yeah, and it's.
The hearing.
It was wicked shorthand on my part, I mean, we couldn't, I couldn't possibly capture the tenor of each individual comment, the highlight, and I think the persistent highlight was, in terms of concerns raised by both town officials and the public related to kind of the subdivision that results in this open space, so I wanted to make sure that we addressed that there, so, that's why I say significant concern was raised with respect to that, because it was a common theme, but we don't have to raise every, you know, list every single thing there, the record will speak for it, so.
Right, right, I think that's fair, I don't, I would say it's unnecessary to go through every single concern raised, I think that's a pretty accurate summary. So then, section two is project and property description, and again, this is, I don't want to say boilerplate, but it basically lays out more facts about what the project is about, where it's located, the detail proposes to construct a total of sixty units within a single building with five floors, mentions that it's part of an office park, mentions wetland resources, proposes twenty-five percent of the units being fifteen units, be rented, you know, be in the 40B, and a hundred-two surface parking spaces, water, utilities. So, again, I don't know if any, if.
Yeah, I tried to amplify.
Members have any concerns here they want?
I tried to amplify a few things that, again, we're gonna talk about in the findings and the conditions, so I wanted to make sure we spoke about that, issues regarding the interplay with the office park there, the existence of wetlands, the open space issue, just so that, again, we're just kind of flagging things, so that they're persistent themes, that when we get to the conditions, folks who are reading it understand how we got to where we got.
Okay, all right, fair enough, yeah, I think it's, anybody have, Mike, any concerns so far?
No, I will read the document, and, no.
Okay. So, so if we, because I think the first two sections are pretty straightforward, for Jay's recommending, that brings us to section three, which is findings, so this is, as he said, this is where, these are the items that we found during the hearing, and I would say that will lead into what the conditions are.
Right, and there's some very specific ones, where we are gonna make some findings, most of them pretty positive, but also setting up some of the conditions that we have, and then I also have towards the end of the findings section, some things that I've learned over the years to kind of put in, that just track the generalities of chapter 40B, so, you know, that its project, when it complies with the conditions, will be consistent with local needs. If the conditions are deemed to render any part of the project financially unfeasible, then the board finds that the conditions, the benefits of the conditions outweigh the economic, you know, just the little stuff like that, that.
Okay.
Set up, but in the middle here, there are important findings that I think the board should spend a little bit of time with, like, number four and five, I think are pretty important findings. There's some traffic findings later, number 10 has some importance to it, but four and five, I think, are pretty important to, you know, kind of what we talk about later with respect to wetlands, Lucas Environmental put together a bunch of conditions for us on the wetland side, so I wanted to make sure we address that. Four, you know, the board finds that the configuration of the open space parcel to be conveyed to the town is not as originally presented to the planning board, conservation commission, and zoning board of appeals, and is, in some respects, less ideal than the originally proposed parcel, however, the board finds that, subject to the conditions hereof, the open space parcel will be a substantial benefit that will provide contiguous open space and linkage with existing conservation areas.
Okay.
So that kind of says, hey, we're mindful it's not perfect.
Right.
We're also kind of mindful that it's 40B.
Right.
And that they did an okay job giving us something useful here that we can approve, and that kind of sets up.
Yeah.
Subject to compliance with, and we have a number of conditions, I think, or one lengthy in particular, but a number of conditions around that open space, and this kind of teeing it up.
Okay, yeah, I mean, myself, I think I find what you stated there, as far as the open space, to be accurate. We know that there were, there was certainly questions raised in saying, that's not what was originally intended, but I think the board in general felt, as you said, is, it is 6.2 acres of land, it's less than perfect, but I think it, in general, fulfills what, you know, what the obligation is, and it is a 40B, so I think we felt like that's not enough, and anybody from the board can feel free to chime in here, but it's not enough to derail it, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of the, some of the more meaty discussion that we're gonna have on that is, when we get into the conditions, and folks may have more conditions, like, I had some notes, but I wasn't able to actually kind of figure out, when we first deliberated a little bit after we closed the hearing, I had some notes, but I wasn't quite sure where they might fit in, but between myself and Lucas and Laura, we drew up a number of conditions on this, and that's where I think the board will have some really important discussion tonight, as to, is that enough, is it more than we need, Doug had some comments this afternoon, that he passed along to you, me, and Laura on that, in both directions, I think, that we needed more in some, and in some places, it might have been overkill, so those, that I think is what we're really here to discuss, is some of that, it's a complex, even though it's 6.2 acres of land, and it is open space, it's, they're reserving easements, several.
Yes.
Easements proposed, and just this afternoon, the applicant team was good enough to add some more detail to that, we can't consider it here, because the hearing's closed, but there's a number of things we're gonna have to consider as to how.
Okay.
We may allow or regulate what's going on on that.
Yeah.
6.2 acres.
Yeah, so that, what they submitted would be considered new facts.
Yeah, I'm grateful that they, that they did a bunch of work today, because it helped crystallize to me how we might impose a condition that addresses how that, what they did for us today, might eventually find its way into final plans for review by our engineer, but, you know.
Okay.
We'll see when we get to that.
Okay.
Condition 33, and there's a few other conditions that relate to the open space, too.
Okay. So, kind of, taking it from front to back, findings one, two, and three are really just about, you know, the hearings, other boards were notified, there was written testimony, there was peer review, so again, there's nothing really, in my mind, to discuss there. Finding four, like you said, on the open space, I think, again, unless a member of the board has a problem, I think I'm in agreement with what you've stated there, and it is, it is an important, you know, point of the hearing. Any concerns with that? Okay.
Five is kind of a similar setup finding, for, we have a number of conditions that Lucas helped out a lot with on the, on the wetlands, they're kind of dotted, well, they're mostly concentrated in one area, but as we go through the conditions, there's some important things, as they're building, what they have to do in and around the wetlands, so, again, more of a setup than anything else, but I thought it was important to have that finding, because we spent a whole night.
Yeah.
Kind of, actually, night and a half, talking about the wetlands, so.
Yeah, I would agree, that's a significant finding, and will be significant when we go to the conditions, so, yep, I agree there.
Six is boilerplate, just said, talks about our, our standing with our subsidized housing inventory, seven kind of follows that, saying that we do have a need for affordable housing. Eight was pretty general, that the project's gonna generate minimal new traffic, there are some conditions relating to traffic that VAI helped us out with, nothing super groundbreaking, the applicant worked pretty hard to engineer pretty safe and adequate access, and certainly, it's not a volumetric issue.
No, I would agree.
But the internal configuration. Condition 10, which just as easily could have been stuck in condition five, states that the conditions imposed, you know, by land design collaborative on the engineering side, VAI on traffic, and Lucas are necessary in order to make this project mitigate impacts to local concerns. The term "local concerns" and the term "consistent with local needs" are defined terms under 40B, so, a project has to be consistent with local needs, pretty generic.
Okay.
And local concerns are everything that we find important locally, so.
Okay, got it.
Eleven is kind of this boilerplate that says, hey, when they comply with this, the project will be consistent with local needs. Twelve, that they've worked in good faith, which I think, in large part, they have, notwithstanding the usual round of little disputes, they have been cooperative.
Correct.
Twelve and thirteen both say that, and, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen are the kind of legal things that, that I put in every single comprehensive permit, that said, hey, we need these conditions, and that the conditions won't render them, won't render it uneconomic, the granting of the waivers is consistent with local concerns, you know, things like that, but there's nothing significant on a factual scale, I'm happy to explain why those are there, but they're pretty much legal boilerplate.
Anybody?
No.
Jamie, okay?
Okay. So, that gets us to conditions.
Okay.
And these I would like to go through, I know that there's a lot, some of those we can go quickly through.
Yep.
But I think we should kind of go through them in order, I'll spend a little bit of time with some, and, you know, obviously, we're gonna stop and talk about a bunch.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
The first one is essentially saying, you're gonna build what's shown on the plans, that's what this is for, that's all you're getting from us, so, and there's both, the two terms that we use are the plans, which is their last plan set they gave to us, and the final site plans, which we talk about in condition four, so, and we'll get to that in a second. Number two is a cap on the total number of units that they're gonna have. Number three is important, because it states that before they can get a building permit, they've got to go back to their subsidizing agency and get final approval, the subsidizing agency at that stage will kind of do a reappraisal, and will look at the final decision and the final plans, and have another due diligence period, usually more abbreviated than the due diligence they did on the front side, and then they will give final approval back to the applicant with a set of requirements for them to, to handle on their end, the regulatory agreement, which we discuss in here, and some other stuff. So that's an important thing that will be happening in between the, you know, behind the scenes, on the way to building permits.
Okay.
And condition four is one that I've kind of just developed over time, and I kind of try and tailor it a little bit to each project, and who's going to be reviewing. This is just kind of, under 40B, we get preliminary plans, now, these plans were pretty highly developed, but not fully developed, I wouldn't call, they certainly weren't like hundred percent plans, or, and maybe not even like seventy-five percent, but they were pretty highly developed, but not as highly developed as we need them to be, for our engineer to have, for the building commissioner to have, for other folks to have to look at these things. So this essentially sets forth a process whereby, at least forty-five days before they apply for building permits, they gotta give us a full plan set. That plan set then is, it's gonna go to DPW, Bill Kundif, the building commissioner, and the board's engineer, to review for consistency with this permit, and for the other standards that they have to look at, and this is kind of the master condition, I've used it over and over and over again, and have kind of evolved it over time, it seems to work pretty well, it has some extension stuff in it, it's pretty detailed, and a lot of the conditions that follow will describe some of the plans, like the individual plans that we will want to see as we, as we get into this.
Okay.
So, any questions about that process, it's really more for the professionals, but it works pretty well, it's all plans that the applicant is gonna have to do anyway, and it's just setting forth some time standard, so they know that we're on a forty-five day clock, and that they know what to expect, and we know what to expect of them, pretty important.
So, the process here is, it does say, they go, they're submitted to the board, the engineer, DPW, building commissioner, clearly, you know, we're having the engineer and the building commissioner who's doing the heavy work here, to look at what is contained in the, in the final, final plan.
Yeah, and I would say, heavy on the, on the engineer.
On the engineer.
So, when Mike Scott is gonna be looking at all these plans, he might call on other people to look at them, like Lucas on the, on the wetlands plans or whatever, but really, I'd say the gatekeeper and kind of the quarterback of that process is gonna be Mike Scott.
Okay.
Or whoever we are using for an engineer at that point.
And if he has concerns with the plans that's submitted, what's the process for that, does that come back through the board, or directly back to the applicant?
Right, so he can state, like, I can't approve these, they're not consistent with it, so he has to approve them, generally, he'll work with the applicant's engineer, which he's already demonstrated, you know, an ability to do, to make sure, hey, you're missing something on that plan, can you do it, so they've got forty-five days to work that stuff up. If we get a real crappy set of final site plans, which none of us expect, then there would, could be potentially a rejection, and all that would have to be in writing, and then obviously, they could cure it and come back and get a more proper set of plans in.
Okay.
So, and some of these plans, and we'll get into it, do require the board to look at them as well? do require the board to look at them as well?
Okay.
Where they're more, less technical, but more you wanna see, like landscaping, things like
Yeah, the things like
engineering stuff, the drainage stuff.
Yeah.
Engineering.
Yeah, okay, okay, agreed. And that's contained in here, construction plans, storm water management, erosion control.
All of that. And then, and then I get into a little more detail on some of those in the next six or seven
Okay.
plans here.
Any concerns? Okay.
All right, so number five is kind of fleshing out, following on number four, kind of some expectations on what the final site plans, um, what the expectation is for the drainage system. So it just kind of, nothing really different in terms of process, just kind of what we expect to see and what that review of the drainage plans is gonna be. It's not a separate review, but it's just a little additional detail on the drainage plans. You know, they've gotta comply with DEP, best management practices. They've gotta include some various stuff. So the engineer may require some additional information, require some modifications at that stage. Gives him the ability to work with the applicant to make sure that drainage plan, the final one, is, is ready to go.
Good.
Number six is, we wanna see the final architectural plans. We're not looking at that for code, building code stuff. We just wanna make sure it's consistent with what they
Right.
presented to us. Because I don't think anyone really minds if there's some refinements to the architectural plan, but if, if they came in with colonial and, and, uh, and now the, the final site plans are brutalist. Yeah, whereas there might be
Might have a problem.
A, a consolidation to be had.
Microphone door.
Good question. So that, you think is adequate to cover my point about somewhat of the same exposure? Um, uh, architecture that's consistent? Um, we wouldn't want something too bizarre to end up on the architecture. That's enough to cover it, no additional conditions?
I think so.
I'm sort of addressing the same point.
They're, they're supposed to be in conformance, uh, as represented to the plans that we got.
Okay.
If we were generally satisfied with what we got.
Okay.
I think it's fine. And again, we have the opportunity to say, whoa, what is that? We've never seen anything like that before. And if they do wanna change the architecture, then they can come in and, with a project change.
So my only point on that was, it looks beautiful, um, relatively for the kind of building it is. Uh, I got a little bit more detail in my comment, that it blends as best it can with the surrounding environment. I think I said something to that effect, and the sidewalks and the walkways, it sounds small, but it'll give it a better look and feel.
I mean
Yeah, as long as we're covered.
I, I think we're covered.
Okay.
There is no harm if you want to state that any, you know, final modifications to the architectural plan shall be X, you know, shall blend
I may have a, I may have a comfort with that rather than telling them how to architect it.
Right.
Correct.
I think that's more general and reasonable.
But, but this, this is an item that would be more for the board to take a review of, of what the
Well, they're gonna come in, so what I would say is probably, and Laura and I are both taking notes, is any insubstantial modification, which we wouldn't make them go back to the drawing board, um, or any modifications or refinements, um, shall adhere to the, uh, shall be similar or, you know.
It could be 100 reasons they have to modify.
Right.
Small reasons.
Right, but, you know.
So we're expecting, we're not expecting a cement, you know, corrugated exterior. We're expecting a residential, uh, plan. That, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, so something that, um, is in conformity with the expectation. It's a residential.
Yep.
And by no means match those other two buildings.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
But no detail.
Right.
It's way over top, yeah, but that's what I'm
Kind of more of like, hey, if you have to modify something, make sure it fits with the original plan and with the surrounding.
And with the surrounding, um, surrounding
Okay.
backdrop of the, of the
I, I deal with that a lot. And like the language as stated and basically, I don't wanna say vague, but just in general terms.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Kind of, kind of covers it because there's no, there's no way we could specifically sit here and
No.
and, and make specific determinations. But the, so kind of what Jay says, if it's consistent with what was submitted, um, I mean, there's, you know, there's a materials key. There's, it has to be, you know, with that. Um, you know, as far as, a lot of the, like, a lot of what you're saying becomes subjective. So it could be your opinion that it doesn't fit in, but it could be their opinion that it does and someone else might, you know.
No, I think it's gonna cover it just to come back from
Like, like, architecture comes down, like, a lot of it is, is,
Uh huh.
if it's, if it's five stories and there's, I don't know, making this up, you know, 20 windows on each story, that each window was placed here and spaced there to the next. And then if a building comes out and it's got 32 windows and there's smaller, you know, then that's objective. Like that, you can say, wait a second, that's not what was on the plan. So that is, like, that's a real material thing.
No, I definitely understand the difference. It's just to bring some context to it. So it, it could be some, you know, there's a whole variety of, of roofing materials. So it needs to, roofing's gonna, no, I'm on it, you know.
Yeah, so then you'll have like a materials key and that should be stated and
So, uh, but, you know, it makes a difference. Um, and it's just the language, not the specifics, covers if
Yeah, I think, I think the language covers it, uh, and often made.
I, I think we can, we can add a little bit more along what, um, what we're talking about here without changing this here. You know, when, when we do these projects or these permits um, for projects that have single-family houses.
Yeah.
We often have a lengthier one here that says, hey, stick to that same general architectural vernacular in the plans you showed us, but by all means, feel free to vary it 'cause we want them to, to vary it. And we might have a quick review of that post-permit. Here, it's a single building. We've already seen the design.
Yeah, so, so what I, I'm saying is, part of the, the general public, part of many of the hearings talked about how it's gonna, um, it's more addressed to the developer, that it was really gonna be as best to fit in, that we could have with the profile, with, with the offset apartments and that, that, that's what it's gonna be. Yeah, I can't tell you how many times I've passed a bill and I go, how did that happen? So that's where I'm driving at.
Sure.
It, it's a, um, and that would, I'll be very, very happy, you know, like, that at least we know we get to take a look at it if something
Correct.
was short shipped or whatever possibly could have go wrong.
Okay.
All right, so number seven is just kind of, it started out when I started drafting these permits as kind of a quick, small, hey, give us a construction management plan. And it's become a little bit lengthier over time. Um, but none of it is particular rocket science. Tell us what you're doing on the site. You know, we wanna know the schedule. We wanna know how you're, you know, with the trucking routes, the traffic mitigation plan, coordination with police and fire, hours, if you're blasting, things like that. You know, it's just, it's necessarily comprehensive because we do get more complaints in and around the construction period. And if something goes wrong in construction mitigation on a decent-sized project, and there could be significant environmental stuff, so it's good to just have it all down there. I don't think any of this is, it's lengthy, but I don't think any of it's particularly offensive. Um, it's all stuff that conscientious developers do generally, anyway. So give us a plan, how you doing it? Give us a traffic mitigation plan, coordinate with police and fire, those kinds of things. So, pretty straightforward. Um, number eight is, I, is also in the final site plans, we want final landscaping. And that I, I generally leave for the board to review. I don't think they've proposed anything previously that is ugly or inappropriate, but it doesn't have the kind of level of detail that we normally would see. Um, I do mention in there because it has been mentioned and I know that Conservation Commission likes it as only native species.
Right.
Um, and then there's a provision in there that all the landscaping has to be maintained. You know, it's a rental, so I don't worry about it as much. So we, we have recourse for the maintenance, continued
Right.
maintenance of the, of the landscape. So this is one that comes back to the board.
Okay.
So in that 45-day time period, this is one that you'll look at. Usually, pretty easy hurdle. We just wanna see the prettier pictures
Yeah.
of what that landscaping looks like.
Jay, as we turn the page, there's additional conditions that kind of work into that, which are great.
Okay.
I just, I don't know, there's like four or five other points that, that's not just the catch-all. There's some even more specifics.
Right, yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Some of these were like specific notes. There was like number nine, I think, I forget who requested it, uh, requested kind of a, a tree inventory of the proposed 6.2-acre open space.
Yeah, that was my feedback, based on public feedback.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I thought that that was high value.
Okay.
If we could get it in there, yeah.
Number 10, I think they already show a snow storage area. It's possible that that will move, but we wanna see where that final snow storage area is. Um, this number 11, I think, was, came out of, I think, our very last hearing session, that we wanna see a, um, a final wetland delineation. In Lucas's eyes, there were still some things that needed kind of final delineation on it. So that, most of that work is, is already done by the applicant, so just those, that final site plan should include that. I do include in the, let's see, I think it's... In, in the third sentence, it says, "In the event that any updated wetland delineations result in proposed work being within 20 feet of a wetland line or all, if already within 20 feet, then closer to a wetland line, a project change shall be presented." The issue that seemed to resonate the most was, look, the work you're showing in 20 feet, we can get around, some of it is in already degraded or already developed areas. But they made an effort, Lucas made an effort to get as much work out of that 20-foot zone, which is kind of sacrosanct for the Conservation Commission, out of there. So if it shows on the plans now, it looks like, okay, those areas, but if you're gonna have new areas of disturbance that close to a wetland, then we're gonna need to see a project change. There, that there seemed to be a significant amount of concern coming from Lucas and the Conservation Commission on, let's try and keep things out of there. And I think the applicant in good faith is all, also made some plan modifications to limit those disturbances, too. I, I assume everyone's more or less on board with that. It's been tracked through in my notes.
Yeah, I think that, that seems to follow in general with what we were hearing, like you said, from Lucas, so.
Yeah. The number 12, related to, and I think I got it right, that little kind of isolated seepage slope wetland area that they have to eradicate.
Yep.
It's a small area and they've agreed to do some replication elsewhere for it. And generally, that's a two-to-one replication. That's just, the, the final replication plan is gonna get reviewed by Lucas. Let Lucas do their things during that 45-day time period and, um, make sure that, that they agree with that.
Okay.
So, 'cause that's not something that would get picked up by the CONCOM 'cause that's not jurisdictional
Right.
under the Wetland Protection Act.
Okay.
So I think everyone was on board that it could be replicated elsewhere and
Yeah, I don't think there was any, any, uh, conflict with that.
No. 13, I had a note that folks, I, first of all, I don't think, and I could be wrong, I think that they didn't wanna do too much by way of an irrigation system over here, anyway.
They did not.
So if they end up going with an irrigation system, the comment that I had, or that I had written down in my notes is that, um, uh, no, no irrigation wells, um, uh, should be within the 100-foot buffer zone, essentially. So, but my recollection is that they're not planning to do that, anyway, that they're trying to go with dry or drought-resistant species.
Okay. I don't think there's a, a problem with that statement, either.
No.
Not to me.
So final, uh, landscape plan details for wetland seed mix, where they have to do it, where they are, they are doing some disturbance of some buffer zones and they'll probably seed it with some buffer zone kind of seed mix. And I think we'd get review by the engineer or Lucas on that. And some of these other conditions are, um, by others, not, not from me. The number 15, construction exit mat, um... So these are kind of, I think these are VAI, Laura?
Um, number 15 was from Lucas and then starting at 16 is VAI.
Okay. So the 16, 17, 18, I believe?
I think it's 16 through 21 are from VAI.
Okay. So those are all things, I mean, it seems like ages ago that VAI reviewed stuff.
Yeah.
That's all stuff that Jeff Durk felt was important here. Um, Doug did have a couple of comments on a, on a few of them. Um, 19, he wondered if maybe there is a proposal for interior bike parking. I, I don't recall it ever coming up. Uh, very often, it's an amenity offered. I imagine they'd offer that amenity if, if it comes to that, but I don't recall a discussion on it.
Where are they gonna bike to? Around the park lot?
Yeah, but
They can't bring the bikes on the, uh, preservation.
Route 9?
Route 9.
There you go.
Route 9.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, happy, happy biking.
Doug's comment on 20 was wondering if we needed spaces for, an, an extra space for ride share. And I think his thinking is, that's just more spaces of parking. I, I leave that to the board to discuss. This was a comment from, from Doug. It was a, obviously, or something that VAI suggested. And VAI, I work with them a lot. And that's something pretty typical for them to have in larger projects.
Yeah, I had something similar, but I know we had run by the, uh, busing company that come through, but bus stop, something, yeah, of that nature.
Yeah, no, I
We need a spot.
That, that's perfectly logical.
Yeah.
I mean, food delivery, ride share.
Food delivery.
Yeah.
Bus stop. Temporary parking. Swing through.
Um, 21D, Doug didn't feel that D, I think, was particularly necessary. You know, work-at-home accommodation should be included in the project and may take the form of meeting space or business office in the common area. I'm not sure what the basis of that is. I think a, a lot of projects like this do include some small common area to, to do some work.
Where did that, where did that, that come from? Was that from a peer review?
Yeah, that was part of VAI's suggestions.
Okay.
Don't they have an office right next door?
I mean, uh, go ahead, Paul.
I think it's just a recommendation for, you know, for common space within the, you know, within the building itself, nothing to do with, that's not like, like rentable office, but that's just common shared use space.
There's a conference room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I never saw that.
I mean, to be honest, I, I don't overly think we should get involved in the inside of the building as much as the
Yeah, I don't
like that. I, I just think that oversteps our, our bounds.
Like a recreation area.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we're not designing interiors where, you know, we're not gonna start then talking about, you know, what plant should be on the inside and, you know, what color the carpet should be, like that. I think stuff like that is not within our, within our I think stuff like that is not within our, within our interest.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, we, we should take it out if, if we, if we don't think it's necessary. My guess is that amenities like that, if the market demands it, they'll probably include something.
Yeah, right.
For larger projects, we see bigger community space. This is 60 units, so maybe not as necessary.
Jamie, did you have a thought on that?
I don't, you know, they don't even, I mean, then you're down, where's the internet and all that?
Yeah, I mean, and a lot of the, the units themselves have, I guess was delineated as an office or a den, so there is kind of, in the units themselves, it appears to be workspace.
Everyone is building workspace now into their floor plan.
Exactly. Jamie, you want to go ahead? Uh-oh, it's not working.
Dan, can you hear her?
Hold on, Jamie.
Doesn't say she's unmuted.
Well, see, last, last time, I thought you guys were just blocking it.
Something about this room, Paul.
We did make it work last time, but I don't remember how.
Yeah.
Is this any better?
Yes, we hear you.
Yep.
Oh, good. Now, I, I forgot what I was going to say.
Naturally.
But, um, I don't, I don't think I have a, a major comment to add to this.
Okay.
Okay, so, did you guys want to get rid of that whole condition, or just part of it?
I, I think, I agree, I, I don't, I don't think there's a need to put that in there.
Welcome packet?
I agree with Paul, I think this is kind of overstepping.
The welcome packet? I'm not comfortable. There's the number C? 21 dot C?
C?
Yeah.
So C as well?
F?
Where's F?
F was regional transit.
Welcome packet, yeah.
Yeah.
To a degree.
Bicycle parking.
Weather protected.
I mean, as someone who rides a bike...
Well, I understand why the comments were made, just like you said, probably generic boilerplate type things you like to see in a project, but I don't, I don't necessarily think that, like you said, in, in something of this scale of only 60 units, I don't really feel that that's...
I, I'm, I'm, I'd be okay with the, with the bike, bike parking, honestly. I, I do agree that D, C...
And F should go?
And F should go, yeah.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, that's, for us to do that, I, I don't think that's appropriate.
We don't have much in the way of public transit, B, what about B?
Well, that's the whole thing. That, that's a larger question for the town to, and the region to address.
Yeah.
I mean, those are nice things as a rental, whomever is handling the rental part, to provide a package like that, it's, but it's nuts.
Yeah, so...
You can't be telling...
So let's, yeah, so just look at, look at the other items in here, A and B. A is assign a transportation coordinator for the project. Who may have other responsibilities to coordinate the TDM program, transportation demand management.
I may have missed it, but where did the, where did this come from?
Uh, this is VAI, isn't it?
Yes. Our traffic peer review.
The traffic peer review.
Oh, okay.
Maybe they're doing a lot of inner-city stuff.
I don't think any of it is required for us to do here, and if there is under DOT for a curb cut or whatever, if they're required to do that, they could do it on their own. So we could leave in as much, or take out as much of this as you want. We don't have to cover this stuff here.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I guess my question would be, how, how common is it to do that in a project of this size, or 40B?
I mean, it's not a small project, but I get the point. It isn't a big project either. We have, like, I'm doing a project of about 100 units in the town of Middleton, but it's really complicated from a traffic standpoint, and there's grants coming in, and the state says if you're doing, if we're going to give grants for widening that roadway there, because it's on a numbered route, you have to have a TDM, you know, so you have to have these plans. Here, there's not that requirement, so we didn't, it's fine. I mean, if we wanted to just reduce 21 to having secured bicycle parking provided, then that's certainly acceptable, and if they have other requirements of them, then they could go through that, too.
Yeah. I don't know, do we feel like, the only thing really we want to hold on to is...
It's in 19. It's already...
That's interior.
Oh, you want, it says exterior bike racks.
Oh, it does say.
Yeah, it does.
Six exterior.
Yeah, six.
It says, um, that, yeah, the...
So what, should we just get rid of 21 altogether?
I think so, sure.
Weather protected.
So, if we're back to 19 and eliminate 21, should we, unless it's forthcoming, um, address some type of general, I don't know, bus or what do they call it, delivery? It is in here, provides for deliveries with the busing, too. That's 2021, 1921. I'll say that again, because it sounded like I rambled. So 19 is good and covers number 21, but 20 talks about parking for resident, ride-share providers and deliveries, and bus stop.
Well, I, but I, I don't think bus stop would be appropriate there, because this is talking about, you know, temporary parking spaces. I, I, I don't think, I don't think a bus really applies here.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, bus isn't going to be, I think that is, again, it may be a generic boilerplate type thing, if you had a project that's on a urban street, that you should, you know, provide for a bus stop, but that's not...
What, what, um...
I mean, that has nothing to do with like a school bus drop-off, this is...
No, a school bus drop-off, I'm actually addressing the school buses, because they're, they've agreed to come into the complex.
Right, and they have the turnaround in the parking lot.
And they're going to be able to turn it around.
Yeah.
What are they going to stay, you know, it's just, it's not a big deal, just, either they're going to stop at every unit, at every door, like they do currently, or they're going to have a designated area that the kids meet at the end of the complex.
We, we can state that the final site plan shall include accommodations for the school bus.
Right, I don't know if the bus wants to stop at everybody's front door as much they do with the...
Well, I'm sure there would be one stop at the...
Yeah, we're saying the same thing, so I think one stop is worth mentioning, a general area designated on the site plan.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make sure that the final site plan shall include, you know, designated area for complying school bus stop.
Right.
Okay.
Not, not for public, not, it's...
Right, okay.
It's just there was a lot of time spent about the school bus, and then the superintendent of schools, I believe, had agreed that they were going to bring the bus in and not put the kids on Route 9.
Right.
With their bikes.
With their bikes.
Right.
And their parents.
So...
Their parents would go to the end of the block.
So we're going to, we'll strike 21 in this entirety.
We're striking 21, I'm adding a, a notation somewhere, or a separate small condition about there being a school bus stop shown on the final site.
Okay. That brings us to 22.
Okay, 22 is, you know, I have this in here because we don't want projects to go on forever. We want them to complete, once they, once they start working on the site, in, in terms of the, the clearing, whatever else they have to do, the excavation, the grading, we want them to complete that onsite infrastructure, not so much the buildings, but we want this thing to be, we don't want it to be an open construction site forever.
Right.
So I, I have this.
That seems reasonable.
I'm good with that.
Get that done within three years.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
23 is, hey, just comply with all other permits and approvals. 24 is work with the fire chief on issues relating, any, you know, remaining issues remaining regarding emergency vehicle access, hydrant location, fire flow, those things, which they would do through the building permit phase anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Final site plans showing cutting and clearing shall be consistent with the site plan referenced above. There shall be no other clearing or site alterations, other than those shown on the plans of record as most recently revised. We don't want them, it's already a tight site, there's already concerns that there might be too much clearing, so this kind of says that's how much we want cleared.
Okay.
Number 26, I realize is kind of a duplication of something we said before on the irrigation system, so Laura and I can work to...
Okay.
Make sure that we only say that once. You're just not going to put elements of an irrigation system within 100 feet, so you can probably take out the other one, Laura, and just leave this one in.
Number 13.
13, yeah. 27, final site plans include a final lighting plan. They have, I believe, a lighting plan in the plans already, so just give us the final, all exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. I think they've already shown their commitment to that already. 28, can't get a billing permit until you've got neither an order of conditions from the Concom, or superseding or final order of conditions from DEP. 29, got to connect to the municipal water system. They've got to, the DPW is going to approve the final plans for that. The DPW isn't weighing the benefits of it, he's just looking at it for technical stuff, because technically, you're granting approval for them to connect to the water, it's something that, that we do here, is the ZBA and a comprehensive permit. The technical stuff, the DPW director will look at.
Right, okay.
If there's easements needed to give to the town for water, sewer lines, sewer infrastructure, anything like that, then they, we, we get to review those. We want a signage plan, um, under, this is number 31, signage monument plan, signs and monuments to be used during the marketing of the project. Be submitted for the board for their approval prior to, all signs shall be submitted for the board's approval prior to the erection of those signs. And Doug's comment was, he thought that they did give an updated monument plan, but I, I would expect that'll probably change.
Yeah, I thought there was something.
Just give you a repeat on that.
Yeah.
32 is kind of important, it's not particularly complicated. It's, they, it's got to deliver to you a suitable subdivision plan that you can sign. You are serving as the planning board here, you have to be given that, it's got a specific signature block that references 40B rather than the subdivision control law. It's not particularly complicated, but they've, they've got a, that's got to be given with the final site plans, they'll bring mylar's for you to sign. 33 is a big condition. This relates to the 6.2 acres of open space. So it says it has to be shown on the subdivision plan. It does say, no encroachments, construction work, clearing for buildings or grading, except as may be permitted herein or allowed on the open space, which shall be for conservation and passive recreation, as may be designated by the Concom. A copy of the deed to the Concom is subject to the prior review and approval of Town Council. That is pretty straightforward, but the applicant does require, if we recall, to do some work before they turn that over, and to retain some grading easements, a swale easement, some drainage easements in that. We had some general description of that during the hearing, but when I was going through the plans and preparing this decision, none of it was so definitive that I could say, well, easement A is this, easement B is this. So what I think they need to do is prepare like an easement plan for us to look at, and that would be like a separate plan. That plan would show the easements, and Mike has seen these on plans, it'll say easement A, and then there would be probably a little chart on there that says easement A, you know, number of square feet probably, and the purpose of it, so that there could be an easement plan. Maybe that gets recorded along with the, the easements, or the, the open space deed, maybe not, but it's important for us to know what those easements are. It's also important for them to know what their rights are continuing, if they need to do some continuing maintenance of, say, that kind of tricky little swale that wraps around that little jog in the open space. So I think for their benefit and our benefit, a key component post-permit, give us an easement plan. They actually did a lot of work today on this alone, because I, I emailed with them, and there was something preliminary, maybe not the level of detail I think we're looking for ultimately, but there's a, a number of different easements. Some of them could be temporary in nature for the construction period, some of them could be permanent in nature, but I think that that's something that should come in with the, with all these materials, with the subdivision plan, with everything else, so that, so that we can see exactly what it is, because it was a significant concern coming down the stretch. People say, okay, if we're getting open space, it should be open space.
Right.
So I think the easement plan should minimize, and I know they want to minimize as well, as much reservation of rights and as much messing around with that 6.2 acres as possible prior to its conveyance to us. So that's what we came up with here.
Okay.
Yep.
As that moves forward on the easements, that there's some, those are my notes, some safety considerations be included. I don't know, I don't know the exact slope, or the rocks, or how that swale's going to work, but, um, in the maintenance plan. Someone could trip and fall, there was just...
So some of that is going to get picked up if they have steep slopes.
Yeah, that, when I said the word slope.
That's going to get picked up, because like sometimes when there's slopes in and around drainage components, there's going to be, could be requirements for fencing for other precautions. That's going to get picked up in the final drainage plan, because some of these easements are part of the drainage.
Right, exactly, so I'm like, where does that end up showing up ultimately?
It's going to show up in the, in, I think, condition five, where they're given a full drainage plan that Mike Scott's going to look at, and if he sees like a four-to-one slope, he's going to say, we need a fence at the top of that slope, or something like that. So I'm sure all that stuff gets, gets picked up there in the, in the drainage component. Here, I'm just trying to make sure that everyone knows for the record what they need to reserve for, to make this project work, or what they need to disturb prior to conveying that. You know, maybe there's a restoration plan with it, so I think it's pretty important that we get that down. I don't think it's particularly onerous, but it, it'll, it'll help everyone, it'll help the Concom, too.
There was a lot of concern on soil restitution.
Yeah.
Not just the general native plants and the inventory, but how's that going to get dealt with, and that would be on the easement plan, you think?
Right.
Okay, got it.
And I do want the, that final easement plan to get reviewed by, by this board. Obviously, engineering's going to look at it, too, but because it is affecting the value of that open space, most likely in a slightly negative way, I think it's important that the board is satisfied that the easements aren't overreaching, and if you look at it, and with, maybe with the help of Lucas, or with Mike Scott, say, hey, could you live with a little less there? Can we reorganize that so maybe that drainage area isn't quite, you know, in our face when people are using that open space, you know, things like that.
From the timeline and the conveyance standpoint, thank you very much.
And this is just more of an open-ended question. So, because there's some, clearly some temporary easements, and then possibly some permanent from a maintenance easement, but when, from the timeline, from the site project, when does the conveyance to the town happen? Because if, if they're doing work on the, the land that's going to be transferred to the town prior to the conveyance, we don't care about it to a degree. It's just more the permanent easements on the chain of record, so it's just a timeline perspective.
Right, so there's a few things, so under 33, we want that conveyance before building permits.
Okay.
So, but what I would recommend, so we can, so they can get to doing their work, is within 60 days from the date this decision is final, that we get that easement plan.
Perfect, that's all I wanted to make sure of.
I think, I think a lot's going to flow from that.
Yeah.
Because then they can prepare their final site plans and, and start building out that conveyance. I don't want to slow them down, like, we could have, I originally thought, like, let's have this come in later, but then if the easements change, it really affects their construction schedule, so I figured we'd, we'd get the easements out of the way.
Hundred percent, no problem. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Right, okay. All right. So, open space was a big, that parcel was a big issue. Obviously, we're not getting the most perfect and pristine piece of open space. We are getting, certainly the more northern portion of it is going to provide the balance, you know, the majority of the benefits and the contiguity with, with Breakneck Hill. But, um, any further comments on that, on what, what we're looking for? We're going to pick up a little bit of that, I think, in, maybe in some other conditions, but most of it was right there. but most of it was right there.
No, I mean, again, I think the, the general idea of what was conveyed, I think the board was, was okay with. And then, and then really what, what we're concerned with after that, I would say, in general, is the, you know, the swale and the, you know, the safety concerns that were raised, so, and that, we've already talked about that, so.
Okay, all right. All right, moving on. Condition thirty-four, we just want them to use best efforts to get a building permit within one year of the decision. The reason we want that is twofold. One, we want them to get this project underway. Two, the day this decision is final is the day we get the fifteen, well, the all sixty affordable housing units on our subsidized housing inventory. If there's no building permits within a year, they drop off. They'll come back on again when we get the building permit, but I've been in situations where there are developers looking at around, waiting for that thirteenth month to come, and then quickly filing their application, you know, if for some reason we lose units that get us to a safe harbor. So, I mean, we'll work with them to help them get a building permit. It is just one building, but it'd be great. Can't force them to do it, but it sure would be great if they got it within a single year. At least the building permit. Thirty-five is pretty standard stuff, just some pre-construction meetings and then some routine quarterly meetings to, with the engineer to see where things are.
Okay, I'm going to, there is somebody on Zoom raising a hand. I just want to see if they have some concern on something that we already raised.
I mean, it's not a hearing, but it's up to you if you want to.
Not in a public meeting.
No, I know that.
Unless it's Jamie.
No, and Jamie, Jamie's already in, so, I mean, my.
What are we doing?
All right.
Have a small comment.
No, go ahead.
Me? I'll go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay, and number thirty-five, does it make sense to take, put with number thirty-five? It's way at the back. Is that a good place, Laura, to put the contact, to request the contact information there? There's a request that she gets way to the end of the application to have a.
Oh, under the miscellaneous there?
Yeah, yeah, it's like way at the back. I'm just saying, or vice, you know, because you're sort of talking about some procedural things, and maybe that's a good spot for that. I did see, oh, and by the way, let us know who to talk to. It's in here.
So that's number seventy-three?
Yeah, right at the back, prior to the.
Sure, I think we can tuck seventy, we'll move seventy-three to thirty-five.
Yeah, because it's more, more procedurally, maybe better fitting there.
No, I agree. Number thirty-six, pretty routine. We ask them, provide us, provide the board with municipal lien certificate, just saying that everything's been paid in full, no outstanding municipal liens. Technically speaking, if there are outstanding municipal liens, then we don't give building permits, so. Number thirty-seven was a comment, I don't know where it came from, but I had it in my notes that if they're going to use.
That was open land, or that was, what's the other, the other?
Stewardship.
Stewardship, yes.
They wanted to be seedless, and my understanding is that CONCOM would, requires that in almost all instances anyway.
CONCOM requires straw.
Straw, yeah, I was going to bring that up.
Okay.
Straw, I think.
Why don't I say straw or hay?
No, not, not no, let me better phrase that. There was a request by stewardship to only use straw seedless.
Okay, all right, we can refine that a little bit to make sure, but.
Or compliant, or maybe the word is compliant, you know, a compliant, so I don't want to box them in if I'm wrong on that, but that was exactly what stewardship had requested.
Okay. Thirty-eight is if there's police details required, they're going to have to pay for Thirty-nine, I had this highlighted, I assume Mike felt this was okay, I just didn't know what the requirements were, this is kind of a standard condition for me. I assume Mike Scott felt that this was required, otherwise he would have commented on it.
Pardon me.
Number forty is, kind of, their hours, you know, that, that they can operate in terms of construction, and what days they have to take off, and that they should try and keep the, the site dust-free, talks about deliveries, et cetera, et cetera.
No, it, but it, I'm just trying to follow it. It says no construction before seven or, no construction or deliveries before seven or past six. Deliveries may be made after six until six PM. Is that conflicting, the later sentence, or is that referencing?
Yeah, we probably don't need it, it's, because I think it's, there's probably a mashup of a couple of things that I was working with, I'll take that out.
Okay.
Was there, pardon me, was there a request for waiver of the town's sound by law? Noise, noise I mean to say.
I don't, I don't recall that on the waiver list.
So we have, I'm just saying we have, I don't know if you want to incorporate that into the verbiage, it's just there, there's rules about that noise, what time to open for construction and close if you're near, they're not really in residential, but it would be.
Wouldn't that be part of the building permit?
It's part of it.
That's part of that. Noise more, I believe pertains to an ongoing operation that's going on, not construction. So if you're a factory, or if you're having, you know, delivery trucks constantly, because you're a, you know, supply warehouse, it's more.
We didn't waive it, we didn't waive.
Like we've had in the past and some other things that have been in front of us, but this doesn't.
Vibration, it was vibration.
This doesn't, this is, this, I mean, an apartment building doesn't generate noise other than, this is like pertaining to the construction.
Construction noise specifically.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't, I thought we.
But, well, I don't, but I just, I don't think that would be beyond the normal requirements.
I don't think we regulate active construction sites in terms of the noise or bylaw.
I mean, if there's, like you said, if there's blasting, that's a different, that's a different thing. Yeah, but then if that was mentioned, like, that has to be permitted and regulated and all that type of thing.
Yeah, it says.
It is kind of fun what goes on.
So.
Noise associated with contracted work is allowed between seven AM and seven PM on weekdays, eight AM, six PM on Saturdays. Contracted work shall not be allowed on Sundays or holidays.
Which is like our bylaw, okay.
That is the bylaw, yeah.
We capture most of that here, we're giving up, I mean, it's not a particularly residential area, so we're giving them, I think, a little bit of extra time on here and there on it, but mostly tracks that.
I mean, it's not residential, but it does carry, so, but I think that does.
It's pretty standard stuff, you can, if anyone felt strongly about the hours on either end, we could.
Yeah.
Those seem to be typical hours in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I thought it was pretty standard.
Basically what we're doing in general.
Yep, I think so.
I just didn't even know if we needed to say it, but I guess I'm okay with just saying.
Pretty sure they'd probably want to be out there on Christmas, but now they're not going to be.
Or Eve.
We've ruined it.
The Grinch.
Okay, the Grinch.
So forty-one is just when they're done with the stormwater management system, just kind of one final inspection certification that it, that it's working, kind of like an ASBIL, but just for the stormwater. Okay, waivers, so here's my approach to waivers, and then we'll kind of get into it. There are counsel that say, I want to list every single, every single waiver in a list and, and vote on it. To me, that I think is a little bit overkill. We know that the uses here, whatever it is, this is a multifamily thing in a, kind of behind two office buildings, that that's not compliant. I think we need to, that's self-evident. We know that the plans depict several dimensional non-conformity. So my approach is to kind of have an omnibus waiver for the basic uses and the dimensional stuff. And then the process-oriented stuff, the stuff you can't see and not pertaining the use Laura and I put into attachment B, which we'll, we can kind of get to at, at the end, and where we actually either said a number of them were moot, or we denied a few as kind of not being necessary. But that's how I approach the waivers here, and there's a few paragraphs, because I think my concern, from our perspective and from a developer's perspective, is if we try and list every single dimensional waiver, we're going to miss one. They get all those waivers, I don't have a, no one has a problem here with the height of this building or where it sits based on the plans. They have to build it to those specs, let's just give them those waivers. You know, because I've been in situations before where there's been one missed, and someone saying like, well, I want to enforce. What's a building commissioner going to do there? And then someone has to amend their plan, so that's how I approach the waiver list.
I think that's a good approach.
I, I have a comment on this. Regarding the, the five stories, which I know we all agreed to, I really feel like somewhere in this document, there should be a reason why we agreed to it, which is where it sat kind of at the bottom of the hill, that based on the balloon test, right, we, we all agreed that there wasn't going to be a major impact, that this is for a forty-B. I think a lot of people were concerned about the precedent this set, and I think if we put those details in this decision somewhere, you know, it gives some perspective as to why we made the decision we did, and to me, it would be important to include that somewhere. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Why don't we put that in the findings?
I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't I, Jamie, put that somewhere in the, in the findings, somewhere around finding fourteen, where we talk about waivers? I can add an additional one with respect to waivers for height to allow a five-story building, and kind of just paraphrase what you just said right there, given, and you know, kind of capture the, both the forty-B stuff and given the site, how it, it won't be a significant impact. Is, does that work for you?
Yeah, that sounds good. I definitely just, I definitely want it laid out somewhere in this document.
All right.
If, if the rest of the board agrees.
That sounds good.
I'm good with that.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I agree with that, Jamie, thank you.
I think that's a good one. So, some things that, you know, we, we can't waive any state or federal law, anything like that, and we do state things that they didn't request a waiver of, or is going to be, essentially, they're going to be held to the standards as unwaved. And I do, no waivers from building permit, inspectional fees, et cetera, et cetera, DPW fees, unless a board requests it, or an applicant really asks for it, and I don't think there's been that ask here, I generally don't recommend any waiver of fees. Those fees are necessary to prefer our boards and our town officials to perform their duty, so I, I have in here that none of that is waived. That's kind of that, that whole section, there's just a number of things, and some of it is boilerplate stuff that I've been adding in for years, and then we can talk about attachment B, we have that, that's in the, everyone's packet, Laura?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Do we want to talk, skip to that now while we're talking about waivers, the attachment B? Or do we want to wait until we're done? We're about, we only have a few pages left.
Yeah, maybe finish this and then.
Let's finish this, and then we'll go to attachment B.
For a break.
All right, so section D here is the affordable housing stuff, a lot of this is standard. So there isn't going to be anything particular to your findings, or, you know, that they've, they've got to work with EOHLC for an affirmative fair housing marketing plan. It talks about the restriction, about the units being restricted in perpetuity, that they're going to try under condition forty-five, no guarantees that the state approves this, but they're going to try, they'll work with us to try and get local preference for employees and residents of Southborough. Those requests don't always get granted by the state, but we'll give it a try. This is a rental, so the affordable units, it's not like what, in for sale, the affordable units are static, so we usually have conditions in for sale that all the amenities are going to be the same. Here, we don't have to worry about it as much, because they're only going to designate the initial rental unit where it is, and then if someone in that unit goes over income, because that gets certified annually, the tenants of the affordable units, unlike in a for sale, they could become a millionaire and still live in the house. Here, they get an annual certification of their income, and when they hit, I think, a hundred and forty percent of the annual median income, that unit, they don't have to leave, that unit ceases to become an affordable unit, and the next vacant unit will then become an affordable unit. But what I like to include is that at least at the initial rent-up, because they're going or build up, they're going to designate affordable units, then those at the beginning, they're going to be similar to all the market rate units.
If it, if you reach that hundred and forty percent, does it become market rate then at that point?
That unit, it becomes a market rate unit, and the next vacancy up will become, they don't have to kick anyone out.
The tenant that's in there gets to stay.
Gets to stay.
But then they're, then it becomes a market rate rent for them, not an affordable.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I would think their lease has to do with it.
And that, and that's going to be all in the leases and regulatory agreement?
Correct.
That's a big set of documents that are going to bind everyone up on that. We don't have to get into that here, the regulatory agreement is going to be lengthy. They've been doing those provisions for a long time at the state level. We're not really permitted, with, with the exception of small tolerances, to even change the state form on that in order for it to comply for an affordable restriction. The state's actually done a pretty good job. We used to fight with them all the time on this stuff, as not being particularly municipal-friendly, but the form they use for how those units turn over is pretty, is pretty solid at this point, so. Forty-seven is the fact that they're going to have to do the regulatory agreement, we're going to see it, we don't sign it, but we want to see it, make sure it complies, we need evidence of it, it's going to get recorded on the title of the property. Forty-eight, they're going to need a monitoring agent to manage this. Sometimes the state actually serves as that monitoring agent, other, other times they can hire someone who can run a lottery for them and do that, but we'd like to be clued into that. Forty-nine is a limitation on their profit. For rental projects, no one ever really goes over profit, certainly for the first ten years or so, they're, they're going to be way behind. Generally speaking, the standard is when they're making more than ten percent per year profit, they have to give money back, but they get to reevaluate their basis in the property every five to ten years, so the costs go up, it, it, they, I've never seen a rental go over profit. I have seen for sale projects go over profit, and towns get a little piece of that action, but, but it is, it's all, that'll all be in the regulatory agreement as well, and we get copies of that. And here, I just want to make sure that we get copies of that, so we can see how the, we get to know if they are getting close to over profit. Fifty is they should work with us to make sure that we get everything signed, that we need to get signed in order to get those units counted on the subsidized housing inventory.
Sorry, are you, are you ready to go on to the miscellaneous section?
Yes.
So, Mike has a need to get home and then log in from there.
But we're having a parenting coverage issue.
So. So I wanted to, I wanted to take a, like a five minute recess and that will give him the opportunity to go home. It'll give everybody else the opportunity to get up, walk around and do what you need to do. So, um, I'm going to ask for a five minute recess. We'll return at 8:35.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are out of recess now.
And Mike is gone for coming.
Now we're back. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So we, we left off at Section E miscellaneous, paragraph 51.
Do you want to wait for Mike or?
Um.
We need him.
Let's give him a minute.
Let's give him a minute.
I'll give him a minute.
Okay.
Just waiting on Mike.
And he shouldn't, and he shouldn't drive fast tonight.
Is it a, is it a me or is it the?
The temperature is going to plummet and it's going to get icy really quick after tonight. Yeah. It's going to go, it's going to be very cold tomorrow. So overnight, everything is going to freeze. It's going to be a huge mess.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
So much fun.
I think it could be kind of a mess in the morning, according to what the weatherman was saying.
Hopefully he dials in quickly.
I think so.
Looks like it stays above freezing, so.
Look at him. He's there. Yeah, he's so happy.
Okay. All right. Now we, now we can continue. Mike Robbins. Mike has joined on Zoom, so let's, um, let's get back.
So 51, 51 is in, kind of in lieu of some of the devices that a, like a, um, planning board would use with the subdivision. So it's, what it really is, is it kind of combines the elements of a covenant with a potential to also do financial security. So it essentially says is do the infrastructure to serve the building and then we'll give you occupancy permits. That's what a covenant does in subdivisions. But if you get all the essential stuff done and then you have some remaining like landscaping stuff, some curbing, final coat of pavement, and you want to get those occupancy permits done and post some, post a bond, give us, put some money in the treasurer's office, you know, that we'll have the engineer calculate that, and then go ahead and get your occupancy permit. So I try and capture in one paragraph, everything that we normally do for subdivisions that are going through this too. It's, it's just a way to make sure that occupancy permits aren't issued until we're inspecting and the, mostly in this case, it's the drainage system and the driveway and parking spaces, um, making sure that that's done. The utilities obviously have to go in for there to be an occupancy permit, but it's mostly to get, make sure that, that driveway is done, the parking is done, the drainage system is done, inspected, and you can go forward. If there's punch list at the end, you want to get to that occupancy, throw a tri-party agreement with a bank or deposit a passbook account with the town treasurer and for the amount left and while you're, you know, finishing up, while you're getting people into those, into those units. So that, that's pretty standard. So I've kind of whittled that down over the years just to its essence, to capture what we do in other development contexts. Um, 52, we want an as-built at the end of this. So give us an as-built, nothing, no magic to that. Most engineers are going to do an as-built anyway at the end. 53 is just a kind of cross-reference to the special permit. You need that to get that done. Um, 54 is that we, we can always do a regular enforcement if we have to. Um, 55, again, kind of boilerplate that the original plans were preliminary, you got to comply with all these other conditions. 56 is that we're not approving or commenting whatsoever on the wastewater treatment plant here. That's for the Board of Health. That is not waived. Their jurisdiction doesn't get waived under 40B. 57 is just kind of release of occupancy permits such that we want to make sure that one of every four going out or getting issued, and they'll probably all get issued at once likely because it's a single building, but to the extent that they're going, you know, working on some, we want to make sure that, um, that if they're on a per unit basis, that one out of every four is going to be an affordable unit. 58 is just underscoring that all of the infrastructure is private. 59 is that they're going to clear the snow and ice. 60, they're going to take care of all the trash. That's their responsibility. 61 just says it, you know, pretty much that the, the parking that is shown is for the 62 is that we're going to have some engineers, they, they have some capacity to do, can, uh, conduct inspections. 63 says they're going to pay for our engineer, just like they paid for our engineer in this permitting phase. And that's all, all pretty typical. 64 is kind of just a legal thing. This project is not conforming with zoning. So you can't just, it doesn't take on some, some boards will impose a requirement, like especially where there's smaller individual units in a 40B, and a, and a homeowner will want to come in and say, hey, I want to add a deck, but it's nonconforming. How do you do that? So sometimes, because technically you're not allowed, it would be a variance. So some boards bestow in those instances, kind of pre-existing nonconforming rights for that. Here, it's not really necessary. It's one building. It's post-existing nonconforming. If they want to change anything on it, they've got to, um, come back to us. It does state in there that we don't want any increase in the number of bedrooms shown by add, making any interior changes to the area to add some loft bedrooms or anything like that.
Does that go along with the Board of Health with the wastewater part, that it's going to be for a specific amount of bedroom capacity anyway?
Probably because it's a...
I know lots of times it was town sewer where it, where it wouldn't matter, but if it's on a...
Well, town sewer would too, because we, we would dole out capacity based upon bedrooms. There'll probably be some restrictions on the final permit issued by the Board of Health that talk about, you know, no, no more bedrooms or anything. That'll probably come at that point. 65, I'm not aware of any agreements that we have with them, like a development agreement or anything like that. To the extent during the process, we have those agreements, they have to comply with those. 66, they got to record this thing. 67, if they want to do changes, there's a regulation for that. 68 kind of repeats something that was a little bit earlier, just that if they need easements, we're going to get to look at them, review it, review them for form. 69 talks about in, um, transfer. So I, we had just had an offline conversation with Brian. These permit conditions run with the land and the successors and signs. If they either transfer to someone else, or the company essentially transfers itself to someone else, then they got to give us that notice. We don't have the right to deny that unless someone got like a million criminal convictions or something, but, um, we get, we have an opportunity to at least know that it's getting transferred and sign off on that. And then 70 is that they've got three years to commence on this. I like to do a definition for that. And in my view, I usually tie it to getting a foundation in. So the three years, they have three years to get a foundation in. I, I did, not a really hard one for them to do.
Didn't we earlier say they'll get it due complete after three years of...
We wanted, that, we wanted most of the infrastructure in within three years. So, but we want them to get a foundation in to commence this within three years. I hope it's within one year, but the permit lapses in three years if they don't get something done of consequence. And very often there's disputes as to what that is. Hey, I did some raking out there. So it should be of a little more consequence than that. We usually measure that. I like to measure that to a foundation because that's like real commencement. So, um, again, 71 kind of is a repeat of what we said before about the engineer. Our agents have a right to go onto the site. 72, if they have material correspondence with a regulatory agency, we should get a copy. 73, we actually, uh, we already talked about that one. We're, we're moving that. That's where we want to have, know who the person in charge is going to be during construction periods. 74 is a basic severability clause. If any one of these conditions gets stricken, then the rest are still okay. And 75 is that people... And 75 is that people can appeal. So, which is true. People have the rights. They have the right and the members of the public have the right. So that is the permit. And then we've got the attachment B, which is a more esoteric waiver list.
Want to step through that as well?
Yeah, I think so. I don't think it'll take super long. Laura's going to get it up on the screen for folks to see.
Is this the request-only list?
This is the the final one that'll go in the decision.
Okay.
So it is not the complete list of requested waivers.
Right, these are just the ones that we didn't cover already, the dimensional and use stuff.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Okay. So the first one, and I believe this is the case, if they're, to the extent that there's a sign here and it's not on the 40B locus, but it's out on the roadway, we don't have the authority to grant waivers there. It's not on the 40B property. The 40B property is the two back lots. So if they're going to do a sign out there, and I think we all encourage them to do it, it's going to have to be complying or they'll have to seek, come back and seek a variance or something like that. Like in the size or something like that. If there's something on site, then yeah, that's fine. But out there, and it's kind of quirky. Normally, it's on the 40B site. Here, it's not. So I can't, you don't have jurisdiction to give the waivers there.
Right, okay.
So. Again, I think that the next one is the, I think the next two are the same thing. That if there's, you know, that sign, then they're going to have to go through the normal process for that. The next one is parking, the number of parking spaces. We probably didn't have to do too much here because they got some variances. But to the extent they need a waiver from the required number of parking spaces, I think we're all satisfied with the number of parking spaces they provided. We're granting one here. So pretty straightforward. They had a, you know, some waiver from some specific landscaping things. And I say, subject to compliance with conditions requiring an approved landscaping plan, we can waive strict compliance here. We're going to get to see a final landscaping plan that's consistent with what they've already done. So we don't need this technical compliance with that. Irrigation, same thing. If they want to do irrigation, I think the only requirement we're adding, we have for them is don't put it in the wetlands.
Right.
I think they're trying to avoid that. But, you know, so that's where it it tracks there. This one, I don't, I think this one didn't catch my last-
Yeah, I think I printed this before we included that last change.
So this one is, there is a, they sought a waiver of invasive. And I think the final version you'll see, it's not here, is that we deny this. We want, I think the prevailing thought is that we want native species.
Correct.
I mean, we'll see things at the landscape plan stage. And if you like it, and if they have some kind of super plant, you know, go ahead and approve it at that stage. But here, I think there's been kind of prevailing thought that we wouldn't be waiving
Right.
that requirement for native species. Especially we've got some open space there and some wetlands and a big conservation area near there. We want to avoid invasives and anything non-native. Again, the next one is 17413D. More landscaping. If we approve a landscaping plan, sure, grant a waiver specifically here. Same thing with the next one as well. Talks about trees. We're going to see, again, the landscaping plan. The next one is kind of their omnibus. Requests for waivers from wetlands. They didn't request a lot of little waivers from all of the requirements. And I think the way I thought it would be best to approach it is we're not going to waive our jurisdiction. The board has jurisdiction over the local wetland bylaw. But if they comply with the conditions that Lucas put in there for us for the wetlands and some of the other things we had in the wetlands, then we'll grant all the waivers they need from the local wetland bylaw. They've worked with Lucas. Lucas has given them some stuff. They've been pretty good on that. Lucas is satisfied as long as they comply with these conditions. So I was comfortable. I don't like doing omnibus waivers of this. I would have preferred if we went specific things with specific things. Here, we're only waiving kind of the basic jurisdictional things. There are, whatever they're doing from a performance standard standpoint, they're still going to have to comply with that. So there's no waivers from any of those unique performance standards under the local bylaw. We're just essentially letting them get closer to the wetlands.
Okay.
Subdivision regulations. We're not waiving the regulations of the subdivision control law here in Southborough. However, you're essentially getting all the waivers you need from subdivision control, provided you give us a subdivision plan that we can endorse that shows everything we've showed already. Again, then the next one, under the subdivision control, where they're seeing something, you know, no more than one building, we're going to grant them that waiver. You know, just, there's one big building. It's not really a traditional subdivision as we see it. To the extent it's even necessary, we can grant it. I don't really even see it as applicable. Next one was general plan shall not be endorsed as not requiring approval under subdivision control law and subdivision plans. This was kind of to allow us to do an A and R. And my thought is we're not going to waive that because we have said they need a subdivision. But we're giving them a subdivision. As long as it's endorseable, they're getting where they're going. The next one is what they call a strip of land. So if I was doing a subdivision in a part of town and I had a dead-end road, we would generally require some way to connect that road to a potential access to the open space beyond it. That obviously isn't applicable here, so I'm fine giving that waiver. The next one regards preliminary plan. And there's no real requirement for preliminary plan, so they don't even need a waiver. So it's just not, it's just not required. There's another add-on there in terms of their request for a waiver. It didn't really quite seem applicable to this particular area of subdivision control. But it seems moot to us anyway because they did relocate that sand filter out of the 100-foot buffer anyway. So it seemed kind of misplaced in the waiver list, but it doesn't, didn't matter at the end of the day because the plans changed. It got better. Some of these requirements for notice, for approval of a preliminary plan, those are waived. They don't need to comply with that. And again, this next one, waiver isn't even required because a preliminary plan isn't required. The next one is about waiver from the requirement for definitive plan. We're not going to deny that, or we're going to deny that waiver because they need a definitive plan. But we're granting them a definitive plan approval, so it doesn't matter. They don't need to have it waived. The next one, kind of similar thing. We're going to grant the waiver in part. They don't have to show all of the particular things that are required under that section of subdivision control. But they do have to have an endorsed subdivision plan. The requirements of that plan under the subdivision control regs of the town are waived, but only to the extent that the plan otherwise shows all the detail that we require in the permit. So it's essentially a waiver. Just make sure your plan looks like the plan we told you to prepare. The next one talks about 10% of gross area being set aside. And we're going to grant that subject to their requirement that they donate that 6.2-acre parcel. So essentially, we're getting more than would normally even be required under subdivision control. The next one relates to lot drainage. Those particular requirements we can waive, provided that they otherwise comply with the drainage that we've already approved, which I believe they are. And then, let's see, we're in stormwater erosion control regs. Similar things, some very detailed, specific things for compliance with this local stormwater regulation. We can waive that because we're getting good quality control over stormwater regulation through all of the review that Mike Scott is doing for us. And the last ones were waivers of our local comprehensive permit rules. I normally would just deny all those because I don't think those are really waivable. They're procedural. But in any event, the first one is denied, but that particular regulation wasn't really applicable to us. Or, and the second one, waiver is denied because I think that they already provided adequate plan detail. So there wasn't really a need for either of those waivers. Everyone, more or less, got along at the end of the day on the subdivision rules. So those were just kind of the other, where Laura actually did most of the work here to flag what wouldn't be in the permit as kind of the omnibus waiver and would be more of this other stuff. So we tried to capture all these remaining ones just in this one document. Seemed pretty straightforward. Most of them, they didn't even need. So.
Okay. All right. First, I want to thank you and Laura for all that work that you did, that put into this. It's very organized, as I would expect when it comes to Laura, and it's very, very helpful. So, thank you. Secondly, I just want to give the board members, if they had questions or issues they thought we didn't address, this would be the time to raise them. If you thought there was something in here. I know, we kind of already went through it, but I don't have any questions or comments at this point. Doris, you were the one that had more of the details and the conditions.
Yeah, I'm a detailed person.
How?
Yeah, the only thing, I think everything's off my list or in process, as we say.
Except?
Except, yeah. I'll just say it, Doris. It's trails and some type of trail access or signage access. I had a note on that to breakneck hill.
Yes, that was one of the ones that, I had this note that said trails.
Trails, yeah, so.
Where does that go?
Okay, so there was, there was not just once, not two, three, three times, and then a letter had come in at some point. Can we have signage and even somewhat of a trail built so that?
Is that regarding access to?
Access to Breakneck Hill be clear, as well as the rules of Breakneck Hill, which is no dog walking, things of that nature, no bike riding, no snowboarding. I think you could-
No bike ride.
No bikes, no bikes in Breakneck Hill. But the point was, I didn't want that to fall because I did, I don't know where it goes.
No, no, I think we can do it, but here's one thing I-
It's not on the plan.
I think we can state that the final site plan shall include a trail plan with markers.
Right, with markers.
But ultimately, I also want to make sure in that condition that ultimately, the steward of this land is going to be the Concom. So I think we can state that that should be on the final site plans. The Concom may say, I don't like that signage, or I want the trail moved. And I think we should give the Concom room to regulate this appropriately. But I think it's appropriate for us, and I'll add a condition, to have trail shown.
A trail, it's access trails, not just necessarily a trail, because that's pretty broad, but an actual access point that's best suited for that site plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Access point, trail, quote, trail.
And that's access-
Which you could actually-
Both access from this property and access to Breakneck Hill?
Is this for the public or is this for the residents?
Well, Breakneck Hill is a public, is a public right.
Right, but you can't have, this is not a public-
Then it's a private, so the private property would need to have-
Right, so this is for the benefit of the residents of the units, not for the public for traversing. This isn't, hey, come park in the parking lot.
Well, the access-
Yeah, that's a really good point, Paul.
Yeah, because you're not, this isn't-
But on the other hand, there's some probably reasonableness of those people who live there. But you're going to get the people from the office building, since same to the parking. The people are going to overflow if there was into the commercial law.
The access from the office side or even the 40B side is private, but the use of the, provided that people can access it from somewhere else. It's going to be publicly owned, the 6.2 acres.
Right. You just, you don't necessarily have to grant public access from a private way.
They can access it from Breakneck Hill, and I know some people access already from, I think, the other side of it.
Yeah. But is-
It's just a discussion. It's a discussion whether to condition it.
If there's a signage of some sort, that would be on the, what is to be the town land, and not on the-
Well, right, and I think, isn't that your point, that?
Well, I think, I think, because I think some of this is going to be up to the Concom. I mean, I don't think we can compel them to allow, if they wanted to allow the public access.
I think it would be a Concom thing because they won't own the property anymore. So they're turning over ownership of the land.
Right, but I think the only, public will be able to use the 6.2 acres, but they won't be able to drive up into this private
Correct.
housing development and use up valuable parking spaces to go on, use that as their access point.
Well, what I've seen, I'm not going to solve this, but, you know, I have seen that over time with our, I have the land itself, the conservation land itself has built in on their, on that land, areas for cars and people to access.
Right.
It's just, but if there were an access point, what's the responsibility of the private developer to point people?
Right.
I don't know.
What, because it never came up, why don't we have them?
It's come up in the context of stewardship, really kind of making it very broad. You know, give us some, I heard, give us some trails. And by the way, you know, put the signs up about the no biking, no dog walking without picking the dog.
So I mean, that could be, that could be fine for the, for the property that's not being given to the town, that the developer is retaining for the purpose of the residents in 60 units, a sign that says, trails in the back, no dogs, no bikes. I mean, that's-
I think that's fine.
Put it near the bike rack.
I think for the 6.2-
6% bike rack.
No, it's up to 12.
For the 6.2 acres, we can say, show some preliminary plans for trails on that. But I think we want to even state in that ultimate decision on access and use of that is going to be up to the Concom.
Yeah, I would agree.
But I agree that we should, we should have them show the connectivity for the residents of this project.
With the rules.
Yeah.
The do's and don'ts.
Yep, all right. We'll come up with something there on that. I think we can capture all that.
Okay. And I'll check my note again, and that's why, that's why I have to find out. Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks, I really appreciate the effort everyone's put in over the months, Laura and Jay and
Jamie?
Yes?
Did you, did you have, did you have anything that you wanted, that you didn't get covered? Do you thought we missed?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
No.
Okay. All right.
And before we, before we take votes and do things too, we've got this special permit that we want to knock out.
Okay. Right.
I had a couple of questions and comment.
Okay.
So thank you on this very thorough document, and you incorporated a lot of the concerns and issues that both, I'm on the, I'm sorry, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and a member of the Stewardship Committee. I had a couple of questions on some of the, I think they're the conditions, I'm not sure. Condition number five, there's a final drainage plan, and you mentioned, some, I was, first time I've seen this, I was taking notes as I went, there was some mention of a fence, and that would be in the open space. So how is that handled, as far as who's responsible for maintenance of that? And then, that was a question, just a question, I guess that comes up when you have the final drainage plan, but the restoration was mentioned during an easement plan, and that goes to my comment about number nine. You have a tree inventory, and the Open Space Commission proposed that, but the purpose for that was really for, if they're going to be clearcutting and denuding the land that is being gifted to the town, that we thought there should be some replication plantings. And I'm not sure that's not mentioned somewhere else, because in another area, number 33, you mentioned minimize disturbance and mitigation. So, but nothing was specifically called out for any replanting of what's going to be taken out from the land. I mean, that's a big clear cut section, and that was our point for having the tree inventory. So the question is, is that somewhere in there, or is that something that can be added in? Because that was the purpose of the inventory request. And I had a couple more, if I should go through them all, or should I let you answer that?
I would prefer you just go ahead.
Okay. We, the Stewardship Committee had asked for the stone walls buffering the two properties. It's not clear, sometimes they're the boundary, and sometimes they're not, that we don't want any disturbance there on the stone walls, if that's something that could be included somewhere, because they are a critical historical and site.
Where are they on the property?
They're along the border between Breakneck, the existing Breakneck Hill and all the way down.
Okay.
And it may go close to where they're doing the parking garage and other areas.
And there's two of them? You said there's two stone walls?
No, I'm only familiar with one.
Okay.
Wherever the stone walls are on the border, or on the, on the 6.2 acres. And, what's my other comment? Mostly, it was about the drainage plan, the fence in the open space, and the tree inventory purpose. And then, one other thing is the information, I think Doris brought this up at the end, and number 21, I don't know if you got rid of all of that, but you were talking about an information packet. If you're going to have that, we'd like information about the conservation land, like no dogs walk, I'm sorry, not no dogs. Dogs are allowed, but there's the bylaw, the town bylaw, but no dog waste. And the no bikes is a big, big issue there, because if you're promoting bicycle riding, and the only other option is?
Yeah, we, I think, I think we struck all of 21.
This has all been discussed this?
Yeah, we, I think we struck all of 21.
Okay.
And we're not in public hearing mode here.
It's not a public hearing, but we can, we have the ability.
This is a comment on old information.
We've discussed all this, and we're rehashing everything we just went through.
Are you?
That's already been mentioned in past meetings. I don't, I don't find this appropriate right now.
Right. I think, well, I think some of the issues, I'm fine with. That was it, though, right?
Well, just Doris brought up the access on the conserva, on the new land gifted. That has to go through Conservation and Stewardship Committee, wherever.
Right, I think we've already said that. We've said all that, so thank.
We don't have to.
I think we're good, thank you.
Yeah, this has all been said.
On the inventory, I did have my note, that was the purpose.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with that change.
Yep.
That was the purpose to?
What is the change? I made a note that we should have a restoration plan as part of any disturbance of that.
Using, of our inventoried items, right.
Right.
When all best cases, I even went so far as to, an internal note to me, you know, when possible, at all possible, the same size and age of plantings rather than seedlings.
Yeah, I thought that might be difficult. I mean, I think the restoration should be?
In conformity with the inventory.
Yeah.
As best possible, yes. But that's, that's true, I don't have any issue with that, that's minor change.
And I didn't have an issue with adding no disturbance to that stone wall either.
I don't either, no.
No, I think that's fine.
That must have happened.
And in fairness, that was brought up, like, a long time ago, and?
It was with, with stewardship brought up as a stone wall.
I think that's reasonable.
It's on record, so.
Okay.
There's, it just can't take anything, no.
I'll let you speak, but it's got to be brief.
Absolutely. Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. The condition that talks about that, that this permit approves the definitive subdivision plan before you've even seen it, doesn't make sense.
Okay.
The wording is, it is approved as part of the special permit.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm?
And, and, and we, we?
No, this is, there's no new information allowed.
We've been over it.
The public part of the meaning has been closed.
Yep.
It's not questionable anymore, it's closed.
Okay. All right.
Brian, you have something?
Okay, okay.
Did you have something?
Mr. Chair, just briefly.
Yes.
I'm Brian Charville, the General Counsel for Ferris Development Group, here on behalf of the applicant. And I want to state for the record that we're seeing the draft decision tonight, just like everybody else in the public. We have not been privy to that until now. On the idea of replanting or restoration on parcel 4C, I want to be clear that I don't think it's been discussed, it was discussed in the public hearing before it closed, and that the applicant does not support the idea of being required to change plantings based on the areas it has to clear on Lot 4C.
Yeah, my thought, Brian, is that with respect to any clearing that you do of areas that we're going to kind of let revert back to open space, is that you provide us with whatever restoration plan is part of your kind of landscaping set, and at the time of final plan stage, I don't think we're going to make any, I don't think it's appropriate here to guess what that's going to look like. But if you are going to do some clearing, just because you got to get some stuff in there, you know, it's kind of tight back there, what's it going to look like afterwards?
Yes.
That's all.
The applicant certainly can share that plan.
Yeah.
But I want to get away from the idea in, on parcel 4C, that it would be, an inventory leads to diameter, breast height counts, and then a certain amount of replication.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to make you, we're not going to do that. Again, I think the guy, the idea behind condition 33 is, give us something that's the least impactful set of easements for construction and clearing as possible, and then, along with that, what are your plans to revegetate those areas? To the extent, some of them won't be able to be revegetated, like the little kind of snake-like swale in there, others can, and that just comes in with that plan set.
Thank you, the applicant agrees with that. Let's go.
Okay. All right. So where are we at? Do we need, we've got revisions in here, right?
So I think, what we need, I think everyone's?
Hand raised? All right. Because he's been waiting so long, I, let's bring him over. Please, with the consideration that this is not a public hearing, so hopefully you have some minor thing to bring up?
Hi, this is David Ferris, the applicant. I just want to do, really quickly, thank Jay and the Chair, and more particularly, the entire board, and specifically Laura, who have been very patient and worked behind the scenes to bring this application forward. By the way, this is David Ferris, the applicant at 118 Turnpike Road. I just wanted to say that this has been a multi-year process, and in terms of many of the communities we've worked in, I just wanted to personally thank Jay, because I think a strong counsel in a community that understands the multifaceted dynamics of different boards and their wishes. He's worked really, really hard behind the scenes, and, you know, as a member of the community for over 50 years, at 53 years old today, we're actually 45 for Brian, whose birthday is today, mine's next week, but the point being is, is having been a member of this community for over 50 years, I'm really, really proud of the way each and every board member in the ZBA has worked constructively with our company, and I'm very, very happy with Craig, Dolores, Jamie, and Michael, and Craig, and everybody who's sort of listened to all the opinions of all the various people who've come before the boards over the multi-month process that we've spent, and I'm really looking forward to working with the community. And it's not easy making a $20 million-plus investment in the community unless you really feel certain that you have a strong ZBA and town council that are really working towards the affordable housing goals. And I just want to make it clear that we, as a company, Ferris Development, are fully committed to the partnership with Southborough, and I want to thank Jay and Laura and the entire board for being so constructive in the process. Thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Yeah. Okay. So, Laura and I have both been taking notes, hers are probably better than mine, and I think we captured the two amendments that we have to do.
Microphone, please, Jay?
Oh.
Thanks, Mike.
I think we captured the few amendments that we have to do on the final signature copy.
Okay.
We're not going to expand on that if we have some great epiphany on something that we've not discussed, so?
No, I would agree.
We're ready to vote, the process would be to vote it as amended here tonight, and then, at some point in the next roughly 10 days or so, you know, probably could be sooner than that, depending upon Laura's schedule, some people are going to have to come in and sign it.
Okay.
So, and do we set it up for everyone to sign, or just for David?
Our typical decisions are just David, but I'm going to leave it.
So just, just David then would have to come in and sign and?
Okay.
Do it that way.
Great, all right. So, I, that's, that's, it's fine with me. Anybody else? Any objections to that plan? Okay, Paul, no?
No, not at all.
Jamie, no? Mike, no? Okay. So in that case, then, what we're looking for is a motion to approve the decision?
Yeah, the draft decision presented tonight as revised by the board.
Okay. You know what, I'll make that motion. I move that we approve the draft decision presented tonight for 120 Turnpike Road as revised.
I second that.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion with a, with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Well, am I not voting still?
Oh.
You can't vote.
You can't vote.
I'll abstain from that.
Okay, all right. Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay, that will approve.
Okay. So I don't think, I think we'll get around over the next day or two to kind of banging the few revisions into shape.
Okay.
So, and then, you're on all those emails anyway.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Unfortunately, for you.
It's coming at quite a time.
Okay, so, we have a very short special permit?
Yeah.
Which essentially, I don't even know how much we have to belabor it, they're essentially revising the?
Yeah, so, so just for clarity, this is what's gone along in every single hearing.
Yes.
Comprehensive permit, special permit, because we're mending the 2005.
Correct.
Right.
Only, not because they're changing anything about it in terms of it being an office park, but they're taking a couple of lots off, and it's going to be adjacent to a project that's going to add some complications to it, but, and I think the spirit of it is, like, okay, we can live with that, just comply with that comprehensive permit.
Yep.
And it's essentially fine, and otherwise, to ratify the 2005 condition.
Okay.
So, that's what the draft says, I don't know?
Do you have that?
I do, what do you want to look at?
So we just went through some, we did, Laura and I tried to capture kind of the abbreviated, an abbreviated procedural history section compared to the last one, same documents. Findings were relatively fewer in nature, because, again, we captured most everything What I didn't want to do in the special permit, though, is make findings relative to the 40B.
Right, no, that wouldn't.
They're necessarily connected.
Yep.
But I wanted to make findings with respect to things like drainage, which are kind of making sure in the traffic, traffic is changing, but that we're finding that it's okay, you know, and the kind of, the usual, the visual stuff, these, those, these things on the screen are all just the standard special permit criteria. We managed to kind of put some findings in here into, into what we're doing there. I mean, the board already approved the office park, so we're just, this is just housekeeping.
Right, okay.
So, and then, decision, and then, very few conditions here ratifies everything previously, excepting such conditions as may have been rendered void by the comprehensive permit. So, the typo there in number two, in that the modification is subject to any and all conditions of the comprehensive permit, to the extent that such conditions relate to the construction, adjacent to the remaining office use, or conditions relating to traffic-related matters. So, just in those overlapping conditions on kind of the infrastructure pieces, in that this doesn't address the 2019 modification, which really was for two small things that don't have any real bearing on it. So, want to make sure we weren't ignoring that, it's just not part of this.
So, just to be clear, is this us just agreeing on the decision and the findings? Because this is, this is?
I mean, it's a special permit.
Okay, but we haven't, we haven't voted on it.
There's no such thing as truly, you do have to vote on it.
Yeah, okay.
Is this like an open item at the moment?
It is.
Yeah.
We've kept it open the entire?
So, so this is still a public hearing?
No.
It's not?
No, 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 we closed, no.
Okay, that was closed.
We closed the hearing, right. We closed the hearings.
You didn't close the public hearing.
Yep.
At the same time.
Okay, all right.
But you did not vote on a decision.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Okay.
This, this ties off that one as well. Technically, we have much more time to issue this, but?
Might as well take care of it.
May as well take care of it right now.
Okay. Again, from the board members, any, any concerns with it? I think we're at a point where it seems pretty straightforward to me. Mike and Jamie, any concerns?
Notting. Nope. Good.
Okay. So, Paul will be in the same place on this then, too? Yeah, okay, all right. So are, the motion we need, well?
I would say, motion to approve the modification of the special, to the, to the 2005 special permit as presented.
Okay. All right. You've captured that, Paul? No?
You would be so moved if you wanted.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Am I allowed to second something?
Second.
Yeah, there we go. All right. Motion to approve the special permit, have been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And William's aye. Okay, that approves it. Thank you. That, that?
I think we're done, because you did the variance a while ago.
Yeah, yeah, so that?
Well, that's coming back around, but that's next week.
Okay.
So.
Okay, but as far as 120 goes, that's all we've got.
That's all for tonight.
That's, we have, do we have anything else on the agenda? That was it? Oh, okay.
That's it.
I will not be here next week, just you know.
Okay. All right, so we have, we have nothing else then.
Yeah, that was it.
And is 250 continuing next week, right? Or is it happening?
A little bit happening. A little bit.
Very little.
Hearing that Mrs. Meath is not available, I'm wondering if under the Mullen rule, it would be helpful if there's, it is truly next week a continuance without any testimony at all.
It would be.
Yeah, that wouldn't count under Mullen's rule.
Right, because Jamie has already missed one for 250, so.
Great. So, let's plan on that then, for the purposes of the Mullen rule specifically.
Okay.
There'll be no, well, I can submit that in writing to you tomorrow.
Yes, please.
And I'm, and I'm back. I'm okay with that one.
Yeah, yeah, you are. You are. You're back on that one, Paul.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Thanks, guys.
That's okay. Sorry, for clarity, we need to meet and just continue, or are we saying we're not going to even?
So, for clarity, next week, we have a public hearing on a modification to the variance for 120 Turnpike for the parking.
Okay, yep.
We have the public hearing for the 250 Turnpike 40B, which they want to continue without discussion.
Yep, okay.
And then we just have some administrative items.
Okay, so we're having the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Okay, I think that's it. And we're on to Paul's big moment.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jamie?
Aye.
And William's aye. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.